Good evening and thank you for joining us this evening for our City Council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham.
Here.
Lurick.
Here.
Mangum.
Here.
Mangum.
Here.
Mansfield.
Here.
Marshand.
Here.
Nichols.
Here.
Vlad.
Here.
If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which, if you would please remain standing for an invocation which will be offered by Mary Ann Forrest representing H.S. Joshua Ministries.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you. Precious Father God, I thank you for such an incredible opportunity that we can come together before you tonight. I lift up our amazing community and our leaders and I just ask that your will be accomplished. I ask for your protection, I ask for your guidance, and I thank you for new beginnings. I thank you for opportunities through the wisdom that they share and through the wisdom that the community brings. So Father, I'm asking right now that your will be accomplished for our community this year going forward, and I ask that you will protect each one of our members of this community with Psalms 91, hedge of protection, and just continue to bless us, protect us, and lead us and guide us. In your name, Lord, we give you the praise, the glory, and the honor in Jesus' name as we ask these things. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Three is the Consent Agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A. Minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the following meetings: Work Sessions of September 14, October 12, and November 9, 2023; Special City Council Meetings of October 16, December 7, and December 18, 2023; and Clarification and Regular Council Meetings of December 7, 2023. B. Material Claims. Council may wish to ratify approval of the material claims for the period of December 1 through 15, 2023, and approve the material claims for the period of December 16 through 20 through 31, 2023. C. The Treasurer's Report. Council may wish to approve the Treasurer's Report for November 2023 showing cash and investments as of November 30, 2023. D. Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee Reappointments. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointments, mayor's reappointments of Keely Cal Patrick and Hunter Rodriguez to continue serving as members of the CDBG Advisory Committee. Both terms will begin January 1, 2024, and will expire January 1, 2027. E. Construction Board of Appeals Review Reappointments. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Robert Jensen, representing Gas and Mechanical Trades and Lynn Transferum, representing the Building Trades, to continue serving as members of the Construction Board of Appeals and Review. Both terms will begin December 31, 2023, and will expire December 31, 2025. F. Human Relations Advisory Committee Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Amy Mar-
Meramontes.
Meramontes, thank you, to serve as a member of the Human Relations Advisory Committee replacing William Hance, who resigned. Amy's term will begin January 5, 2024, and expires January 5, 2028. G. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Appointments. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Ed Gigley and Alexis Jorgensen to serve as members of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Both terms will begin January 5, 2023, and expire January 5, 2026. H. Pocatello Development Authority Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Ruby Walsh to serve as a member of the Pocatello Development Authority, replacing Greg Gunter, who resigned. Ruby's term will begin January 5, 2024, and expires May 1, 2027. I. 2023 Annual Road and Street Financial Report Ratification. Council may wish to ratify approval of the 2023 Road and Street Financial Report. The report accounts for the city's use of state highway dollars during the past fiscal year to the Idaho State Controller as required by law.
Mr. Mayor.
Council President Cheatham.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move approval of the consent agenda as outlined on Items A through I in Agenda Item Number Three.
Second.
So we have a motion by Council President Cheatham and a second by Councilwoman Lurick. Connie, would you please call the roll?
Cheatham.
Yes.
Lurick.
Yes.
Mangum.
Yes.
Mansfield.
Yes.
Marshand.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Thank you. Now for the time that I think most of you are here for is the number four, installation of newly elected council members. Connie Kendall, City Clerk, will administer the oath of office to the newly elected City Council Members. She's going to do this in alphabetical order. Obviously, we don't know the alphabet up here because nobody's moved yet.
I was really thinking like A, B. I had to bring a charger for a quarter.
I pray, man.
I pray, man.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Idaho.
And the Constitution of the State of Idaho.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of City Council Member.
Of City Council Member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Councilman Nichols. I, Brent Nichols. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Idaho.
And the Constitution of the State of Idaho.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
Duties of the office.
Of City Council Member.
City Council Member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
He knows the alphabet.
I, Paulson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Idaho.
And the Constitution of the State of Idaho.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
Duties of the office.
Of City Council Member.
Of City Council.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
You're right.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brent.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Yes, sir.
He left his sign and everything, huh?
He was out.
Hayden signs up and we're good to go. Big congratulations, Hayden. We're pretty excited about working with you, and so this is an exciting time. All right, let's move to Agenda Item Five is election of the President of this council. This time it's been set aside for council to elect a president of the council in conformance with Idaho Code Section 50-702.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President Cheatham.
It has been an honor to service President of this council the last two years, you know, and in accordance with the longstanding tradition that the Pocatello City Council has of always electing as president the member of the council who has served the longest without being president, I'd like to nominate Linda Lurick as President of the Pocatello City Council.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion by Council President Cheatham, and I won't get to say that anymore.
You just barely learned to say it.
I know, I just barely got it. Just clicked. And a second by Councilmember Mansfield. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham.
Yes.
Mansfield.
Yes.
Lurick.
Yes.
Mangum.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's always an exciting time, and it's going to be tough to see Rick go as the council president, done an incredible job. I'm looking forward to working with Council President Lurick, you know, for the next couple of years, and so, congratulations. We will move to Agenda Item Six. We have no proclamations, so we're going to move to Agenda Item Seven, which is a calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. January 11, 9:00 a.m., City Council Work Session. January 18, 5:30 p.m., Clarification Meeting. 6:00 p.m., Regular Council Meeting. Other events: January 6, Ski for Free Day at Meant Creek Nordic Center, sponsored by ICCU. Parking, trail passes, rentals, and mini lessons will be free from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Rentals will be offered on a first-come, first-served basis and will be available in two-hour time slots. Christmas Tree Collection Sites will be available through January 10. Boxes will be provided at City Hall, Rainy Park on South Arthur, the Sister City Park entrance on Pocatello Creek Road for Christmas Tree disposal. Trees will be...did I miss one? Rainy Park and City Hall, Rainy Park and Sister City Park. Yeah, that's it. Trees will be chopped up and used in landscaping projects. Please be sure to remove all strings, wires, and other objects to avoid damaging the city's wood chipping equipment. January 15, City Offices will be closed to observe Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Garbage and recycle pickups will be on schedule. Applications for Pocatello's promise of tomorrow mayoral scholarship for student for students program will be begin will be are being accepted through March 1st. As a reminder, keep sidewalks clear of snow and ice. When clearing sidewalks and driveways of snow, please do not place the snow in the streets. It becomes a driving hazard. We will move to Agenda Item Eight. Public Hearing, HPC Decision Appeal Historic Downtown Pocatello Incorporated. Historic Downtown Pocatello Incorporated, represented by David Lee of Yescow, has submitted a request to appeal the decision of the Historic Preservation Commission, HPC, regarding a sign exception and sort of certified certificate of appropriateness to allow for an internally illuminated pole and wall signs on the Downtown Pocatello Historic District. The subject signage was installed without any approvals on property, both public and private, where internally illuminated signage and pole signs are not permitted. I've got to get to the right. This one's it. I declare the public hearing open. Council, has there been any ex parte communication in this? We've got Rick.
Yes. When this first this vote first happened on the HPC, I had some communications with Old Town Pocatello's Director, Historic Downtown Pocatello's Executive Director, about the issue. That was a couple of months ago, I think, and that's as much as I have done ex parte.
Okay. Brent?
Yes, I received a call from Josh Pullman on this matter, and I explained to him that it was coming up for a public hearing tonight. Told him I couldn't discuss it because it was quasi judicial in nature and encouraged him to come to this meeting.
Okay, that was it. I don't see any reason why they'd be disqualified. Okay, then we should be good. Thank you, Council. The applicant is David...so David, let me remind you, you've got 10 minutes.
Okay.
Then we'll go from there.
So again, my name is David Lee with Yescow Signs, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, for hearing me tonight. Happy New Year, by the way. I'm not sure if any of you had the opportunity to either review the notes from the meeting in November or watch the video. At that meeting, I took responsibility for making the mistake. I was working with Historic Downtown Pocatello. At the time, I really thought I was working with the Historic Preservation Commission on the sign project because it was a sign for the city in a city park, and so I made a bad assumption there. At that meeting, though, it was interesting to find out that of the five members of the Historic Preservation Commission, two of them had to recuse themselves from participating because two of those members were actually working with Historic Downtown Pocatello. And so it got me thinking after that meeting was over that my assumption, although slightly incorrect, was kind of correct in the fact that I was working with members of the Historic Preservation Commission in approving the design, providing input on the design, the location of the sign, and ultimately hiring Yescow to come and do the work. And so it almost feels like there's a little bit of maybe the right hand wasn't talking to the left hand in this process, because if members of the Historic Preservation Commission knew that this sign couldn't have been installed in that location in the first place, why were they participating in the design and authorization of the sign in that location? So putting all that aside, we have a sign that's installed. I think the sign is beautiful, by the way. The Historic Preservation Commission members and the Historic Downtown Pocatello members did a really good job of coming up with the concept, the colors, the placement, and it looks great, and it serves a great purpose. As people are coming under the underpass into Old Town Pocatello and heading down South Arthur, if you don't know that that's lookout point, you'll drive right past it because of the nature of where that pavilion is, it's kind of tucked back behind in the corner back there. And so the sign serves a great purpose in letting people know that they've arrived at that location. And at this point, I'm willing to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions? Okay, let's start down here on this end. Council President Lurick?
That sounds weird. You just said a moment ago that when you were talking about they did a nice job of the concept and the design and everything, you mentioned the Historic Preservation Commission.
Yes.
They were involved in the design?
Members of the Historic Preservation Commission were because they were also members of the Historic Downtown Pocatello Group.
Okay.
And it was the Historic Downtown Pocatello that ultimately hired Yescow to come up with the sign in. And in working with cities in the past, we've done many projects for cities, and obviously if it's a sign by the city for the city, there's usually no permit required, and so I made that assumption that that's what was going on here, so.
And are you, as the sign company representative, are you aware of the historic preservation standards regarding signage in the Historic Downtown area at all? I mean, have you dealt with those before?
Yes, yes, I've dealt with them many times before. But again, I thought I was working with them. I mean, they're the ones that brought the project to me to come and put the sign up in this park.
So were you assuming that you had an exemption?
I just, again, we've done many signs for cities in the past, and it's never usually required because it's a sign for the city by the city, and so I just assumed that that's the direction that we were headed with this and proceeded.
Okay.
Other questions?
So just from previous, what you were mentioning is that you're taking ownership of this mishap and what had happened, so the buck stops here, correct?
It does, ultimately. I probably should have called and said, is this going to require a permit? We were kind of in a time crunch, and so I just made the assumption that because it was a sign for the city that we were good to go.
Thank you.
So I'm a little concerned. Yescow's done work in the city of Pocatello a number of times.
Oh, yes.
So the process isn't a surprise to you.
Correct, to get a permit.
To get a permit, to go through the process of getting permission to put the sign and all of that stuff. That's not unusual for you.
No, not at all.
I guess I'm concerned of why we, why all of a sudden, other than you assumed it was a sign for the city, but you weren't working with the city for the sign, you were working with our downtown?
Yes, and again, given the two names, Historic Downtown Pocatello, Historic Preservation Commission, I made the mistake in assuming that I was working with Historic Downtown Pocatello. So I thought I was working for the city in this matter.
Any other questions, Council? Okay, thank you. Don't go far because we'll have staff do a presentation. There may be more questions. Brent?
I don't have a real presentation to give, other than the Historic Preservation Commission did recommend denial of the request for the exception based off of the standard set forth in the city code, and that was their basis for that decision. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have for me.
Okay, we'll go Brent and then Linda.
Just like to go through a couple of the questions we had in pre-agenda. So the issue is we have three signs, right? We have an-
Yeah, technically, there's three. Two of the signs are in the same location on the back of the pavilion, the wall signs. They're separate signs, but they're kind of grouped together as a singular sign, but...
Okay, so we have a pole sign.
Yeah, we have a pole sign.
Internally illuminated, and that's located on city property.
Yes, the pole sign is located on property owned by the city.
Right. The other ones are in the pavilion, which is owned by Historic Downtown Pocatello, I guess, right?
Correct.
But all three of them are internally illuminated.
That is correct.
And both areas are within the historic downtown area that prohibit internally illuminated signs. Is that right?
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
I also wanted to kind of pick up on our earlier discussion in the pre-agenda meeting. You were asked about, well, let me back up a minute, so the signs as they are are not they are not compliant with our historic preservation standards for signs in the Historic Downtown area.
That is correct.
And you were asked before the meeting or in the pre-agenda meeting about what impact one sign, and I'm talking about the pole sign here, would have, and your answer to that was one sign doesn't have much impact. My concern, though, is, I mean, we have our downtown area is designated as a historic area, and we have historic preservation standards for a reason, and I believe those are important, and I believe in maintaining the integrity of the historic nature of our downtown. So while you can say one sign doesn't have much impact, I worry about the precedent that that sets then in terms of other property owners who want to put up signs, and they say, well, you'll let that one go. So I'm kind of wondering, I mean, on the one hand, I've looked at these signs, and I don't feel they're really objectionable, but they also are not compliant. And so I'm just thinking sort of long-term what this does to being able to sort of maintain those standards and the historic nature of downtown.
I think you're correct. It does create a situation where it's more difficult to not allow these signs elsewhere. It also is an interesting dynamic where this is a city property, and we're treating ourselves differently than we are treating everyone else in the downtown area if we approve the exception. And what kind of message does that give? But I agree, you know, the one sign may not have a significant impact, but as you allow more of these types of signs, it does change the nature of the downtown area, and you end up with an area that looks more like our other commercial areas around Yellowstone or other locations within the city where you have multiple pole signs. And so it does have the potential of changing the historic fabric of our downtown.
Cory?
So there's three signs. Why are the three signs being linked together as one?
So our permits, we permit multiple signs on a property under a singular permit, and so, but they all require an exception because they are internally lit, all three of them, which is not an allowed sign type for our downtown.
So outside of the possibility of setting a precedent, what is the, what would be the impact here for, from the historical preservation perspective?
That's the impact, is the potential it has to change the fabric of, the historic fabric of our downtown. It is a recognized historic district, and if that fabric changes to a point where it's no longer meeting the standards of the Secretary of the Interior, that we could lose that historic designation.
So with that, is there an, could there be a financial impact, say like grants and things that the city would be awarded based on having this historical?
So, yes, so right now, we are a CLG community, a Certified Local Government community. So we essentially have, we get yearly grants from the Secretary of the Interior for historic preservation projects throughout the city. If we lose that designation, the CLG designation, it would make it very difficult for us to get grants for historic preservation. The pot we pull out of is very different. We're almost guaranteed a yearly grant for historic preservation.
So a question that was asked in the clarification meeting was responsibility for pulling these permits. Who, in this circumstance, who would have been responsible for pulling these permits and the oversight of this project?
So that's kind of a tricky question. The sign companies are the ones who typically will pull the permit. They're responsible to ensure that they pull the permit. They have to be licensed with the city to do so, but the property owner is ultimately responsible for the sign. And in this instance, one of the signs is located on city property, and one is located on property owned by Historic Downtown Pocatello. So ultimately, they're the ones that are responsible to make sure that those signs have the proper permitting, but the sign contractors are the ones who are knowledgeable and know that they are required to have a permit.
Last question, my last question. So, and this is another question from our clarification meeting. The city, was the city in any kind of knowledge, foreknowledge, or aware that the city, that these signs were going up?
Not to my knowledge. The Planning Department was not aware of these signs being installed. I'm not aware that the Parks Department was aware of these signs as well, and especially the ones located on city property. It's not a normal thing for someone to install signs on a city-owned property without that communication.
Okay. Councilmember Nichols, and then Council-
So, ultimately, they're the ones that are responsible to make sure that those signs have the proper permitting, but the sign contractors are the ones who are knowledgeable and know that they are required to have a permit.
Last question, my last question. So, and this is another question from our clarification meeting. The city, was the city in any kind of knowledge, foreknowledge, or aware that the city, that these signs were going up?
Not to my knowledge. The, the planning department was not aware of these signs being installed. I'm not aware that the parks department was aware of these, these signs as well, and especially the ones located on city property. It's not a normal thing for someone to install signs on, on a city-owned property without that communication.
Okay. Counsel member Nichols, and then counsel member Cheatham.
So, to your knowledge, has the city allowed any other internally illuminated signs in the historic district?
I would have to go and look at that. I'm not positive. My guess, there probably are some somewhere within...
There are.
There are.
I would imagine there are.
But pre-existing grandfathered signs or new?
I don't have the details of that. I'm not, I'm not positive.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel member Cheatham?
You made a reference to the Secretary of the Interior's set of standards about historical preservation. Is our internally illuminated signs outlined as prohibited under that set of Secretary of Interior standards?
No. That prohibition is, is set forth through our city standards, and part of those standards were established based off of recommendations that were given to us as we created our historic districts. And so, that is, the Secretary of the Interior standards are very broad, and the intent of those are to fit all types of communities throughout the whole country. And so, they're purposely very broad. And so, when you have a historic district, you look at each historic district individually and what standards that district needs to preserve its historical integrity. And so, when our district was established, these sign restrictions was something that was part of that initial establishment of our historic district.
If I may follow up, Mr. Mayor. You know, I've been in this town not quite 50 years, but we're getting close. And I remember some of the illuminated signs, internally illuminated signs that are in place in, in the downtown area currently. Were there when I moved to this town in 1977. You mentioned 50 years, hasn't been quite that long, but I don't think these are anything new or novel that distinguishes them as any kind of a modern Las Vegas sign. They're not flashing, they're not overly bright, they simply give direction and show a location of, and I don't see the problem.
Any other questions? Okay. Before you leave?
Yep.
Have you received any correspondence that we have not seen?
No, I've passed on everything that I've received.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Have we received any correspondence in your office?
No, counsel has received everything.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Then we'll move to any testimony for those supporting the application. Okay, any testimony uncommitted to the application? Okay, any?
I'm supportive of the application.
You gotta move faster. Supportive, we're back up to the support.
Yeah, my name's Doug Chambers. I'm the CEO of Lookout Credit Union. I don't have a pen, but I'll sign in. I'm obviously supportive of the signs staying where they are. However, I also am pro the Historic Preservation Commission. I think that what we're talking about is important. It sounds to me like the process was, YESCO should have gotten the permits, didn't, signs went up, and then the signs were denied. And then we're worried about, okay, well, now we're appealing and trying to get an exception. So, the question is, okay, why would we grant an exception? I don't think it sets a precedent to go through this exact process to get an exception. We would get an exception if the signs help create new commerce. Does it beautify the area? Does it make the, does it lighten the place up? Does it make it safer? I think it does all that stuff. That's all I got.
Thank you. Any others in support? Okay, let's go with...
Frank Nuding, 6346 Old Ranch Road. Guys, people making investments in Old Town, that's what we want. I can't imagine somebody putting a million dollars into a project and want some signage as return on their investment that you would not be happy with. Apparently, the process was not fulfilled as far as the, the application for the signage, but it does not create any more illumination than a regular streetlight. So, as a matter of fact, the actual lighting for that is provided from a streetlight. So, we require when people purchase buildings in Old Town Pocatello to upgrade their electrical, upgrade their plumbing, put in sprinkler systems. They do that as an investment in Old Town. These are old buildings. Do you think the value will actually be there for them with making those investments? They're not. It is a desire for people to want to be there and improve the district. These guys have stepped up and invested significant amount of money to, for the farmer's market to move stuff off the UP Railroad and put the farmer's market in a greater place. The farmer's market has continued to blossom, has exceeded expectations, and us sitting here and saying, "Hey, we made mistakes not making applications," is absolutely not what we're here for. We're here to grow Old Town. Why are we trying to oppose people investing in that property over there? We want more. So, your decision tonight will probably determine whether you have more people that actually want to invest in Old Town. Thank you.
Thank you. Others in support of?
Absolutely.
Well, as soon as you're finished, we've got another one behind you waiting.
You know who I am.
Finish, finish. Thank you, Frank.
Robert Lau, 120 North Arthur, and I too am supportive. I have a pole sign on my property, which is on the adjacent block. The Pocatello High School has a pole sign on their property, which is another block up the street. There's lots of rear illuminated signs, some of which are, I'm sure, considered grandfathered. To Frank's point, downtown investment is, it's a real challenge, and every structure, every property are so unique. And so, like when you look at the International Building Code, or as Brent mentioned, the Department of Interior's guidelines on historic districts, they're broad. And then there's some specifics, but usually there's lots of options. It's not one or the other, and everything must comply. I mean, even the buildings in Old Town, mine is not historically correct. It was built in 1981. It's really probably the ugliest building downtown. I'm not a huge fan of the architecture. Okay, let me rephrase that. I hate the architecture of my building, okay? But it was available, and it works, and we love what we're doing with it. If it would look more like the Neighborhood Works Building, or Pocatello High School, or the Valentine Building, like I'd be like, "Ah, I've gone to heaven." I love that style. I don't have it, but I'm a core fabric of Old Town, or I'm trying to be. And I think as, and I know that I read in the paper, there's, there's some changes coming to the way signs are being looked at as the city as a whole. I've had some conversations with Stephanie, and the mayor had mentioned it to me, and I know there's all that stuff going on. And I guess what I'm saying is, is one size doesn't really fit all, and it's really easy to say, "No, the rules say," but then sometimes we have to step back and say, "Well, what does common sense dictate? And what is really, what are we trying to accomplish?" And I think we all have the same goal at the end, everybody, and that's make Pocatello better, make Southeast Idaho better, make our community better, make this a place where our children want to come back and, and grow their own families one day. My great-grandfather was a member of the Banna County Commissioner. He was a Banna County Commissioner a long time ago, and, because he was from Soda Springs. So, it was really a long time ago, because we haven't been part of Banna County for a long time, 1919. I find it a real privilege to have a store in Soda Springs, two blocks from where he lived, and to have a store in Banna County, just a few blocks where he came to work every day. I love this town, I love Soda Springs, I love Southeast Idaho, but we can't keep thinking that everything has to comply to a very ardent, strict set of rules. We have to, we have to expand a little bit and be willing to think about, "Okay, does it work here?" And this process of exceptions, that's exactly what we're supposed to do.
Thank you.
Thank you, sorry. Was that a clock I was supposed to watch? I was looking for the red light or something, or...
I was supposed to be watching that clock too, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
Any others in support? I slowed it down for you, Doug. Later, you might. Thank you, then. Any uncommitted to the application? Any opposed to the application?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Mike Thering. I live at 1054 North Hayes in Old Town Pocatello. As you know, the Pocatello Commercial District was established in the late 1800s into the 1900s, and that's sort of what historic preservation is based on, the, trying to maintain. We have a really good inventory of historic buildings compared to a lot of communities, and that's what historic preservation is based on, trying to preserve that particular timeline. Miami has a whole different set of preservation rules because they have the Art Deco 30s-type architecture. Santa Fe has a different set of rules. Historic preservation has to do with facade of the building, just so you know. It's not about the wiring, it's not the plumbing, it's not about sprinkler systems or the need for elevators. It's about what the building looks like from the streetscape, streetscape. I've served on the historic preservation for 11 years, and in that time, we had numerous applications for internal, internally illuminated signs, and we never did approve any. One example was Keller Williams, Realtor Mike Johnson came when they were finishing up that building on Main Street. They wanted to put a big illuminated sign, and we said, "How about if we talk about that?" And in the end, I recommended a protruding sign, which is more common of that era, hung perpendicular to the building with kind of gooselet, goose neck lights coming down, shining on both sides of the sign, which they eventually installed, and he was very pleased with it. And it fits in with the building versus a big plastic aluminum box with plastic signage. As, I will say that this location is not as offensive for a pole sign as if this was stuck on the side of one of our historic buildings. And as Mr. Planner, City Planner said, "We don't want Old Town Pocatello to look like Yellowstone Avenue." That's, that's the point of historic preservation standards and, and why we have a commission to oversee these things. And I feel a little bit mixed on this particular sign because it is in a park setting versus on the side of a building, but it is, like it's been said, and once you start accepting exceptions, then it's sometimes hard to...
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was watching that a little bit closer that time. Any others opposed to the application? Okay, then, David Lee, why don't you come back up? There are a few questions you would like to, to answer, so come on back up.
Is it okay if I bring some pictures up for you?
Sure.
There's just one during the day, one during the night. There's four pictures.
Thank you.
All right, so, point number one, when Brent mentioned that no one from the city knew the sign was going up, that's where I kind of have a little bit of pause, because again, two members of the Historic Preservation Commission helped approve this whole process. So, I find it odd that he can say that no one from the city knew about it. People had to have known about it, they're on the committee. It would have been nice to have known that there would have been a question about internally illuminated signs in Old Town Pocatello. If I had known that, I would have brought probably 50 pictures for you to look at. In fact, the Historic Downtown Preservation Commission authorized a new sign to go on Caribou Jack's Building, which is an internally illuminated sign. So, it is happening, and it's there. The sign on the pavilion, I mean, I'm kind of torn with that one being part of this argument because although it is technically visible from the street, if you look for it, it just points into the park. It's kind of like having a sign inside your building. You can see them from the street if you look for them, but it's, it's not intended to shine onto the street to provide clarification on the street, it's just in the park as you're participating in activities at the park. So, that's all I have. Unless you had any more questions for me.
Any other questions possibly? Okay, thank you. Counsel, I declare this public hearing closed. Decide, decide before you, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'm in favor of historic preservation and keeping up with the historic nature of our, of our Old Town Pocatello. I'm also in favor of development and beautification of our city in just about any fashion, anything that brings commerce to our city. I really want to thank Lookout Credit Union for their support of the city and for what they've done at Lookout Point, and I think it would be a grave misjustice if we were to decline this sign. And so, with that, I move that we approve the appeal and allow that sign to stand.
Second?
We have a motion by Mangum and a second by Cheatham.
Mr. Mayor?
Before we vote, I know everybody's gonna want to say something, and so do I. So, let's start on the end here, and I heard Linda speak up. Do you have anything, Rick?
Yes, I'd like...
So, let's just start on that end, and we'll go through, and I'll be the last.
You know, over the last few years, the city's been very proud of a series of signs we put up throughout downtown Pocatello, and they're neon. And if neon isn't internally illuminated, I don't know what it is, and yet we brag about those. We spend a lot of money maintaining and powering those signs, and I think they're, this sign is no less obtrusive or obnoxious than the neon is. I have a real problem with that neon blue. Boy, I cannot look at it. This sign, I look at these photographs, and you can barely make out the Lookout Point sign in the nighttime photograph. I see absolutely nothing wrong with that sign. I wish the process had been followed. David has been humble enough to admit he made a mistake, and I doubt he'll do that again. So, I just think the right thing to do tonight is to accept this, agree for this appeal, and thank Lookout and Downtown for all they've done to make a huge difference in our downtown area. I've been down there a number of times this summer, and I wish we could somehow have counted all the people. I tried to count one day down there, and I lost track in the several hundreds who attended, and that was just one event. There have been hundreds of thousands of bodies in that park this last year. It's been a, I know Stephanie's worked a long time to get this done, but this has been, I think, even a greater success than she envisioned from the beginning. It's a tremendous asset for our community, and I agree with what we're doing tonight with the motion.
Thank you, Linda.
I wanted to make a couple of points, and just one response to something you just said, that neon is allowed in our signs that are allowed downtown. That does fit with the historic nature, so that part, but I understand, I mean, there's a couple of things going on here. Mr. Nuding's comment about, you know, that this is about opposing development or investment in our downtown, and I want to be very clear, and I feel safe to say this for everybody up here, nobody is opposed to people investing in our downtown. We all do have the same goal of improving our city and making it be the best it can be, and we absolutely love people investing in our downtown and appreciate Lookout for all that you've done, and specifically for this park. We were a partner in this park, and it's wonderful. And so, I just want to be clear that this, the problem here isn't about whether we agree with investing in our downtown and sort of making that... with investing in our downtown and sort of making that secondary to some sort of strict arbitrary rules. The rules are there for a reason, too, and I, as much as I believe in investing in our downtown, I also believe in historic preservation, and that is important. And I don't think that we want downtown to sort of start to change and become like Yellowstone or even sort of move in that direction. The, one of the issues that I have the biggest problem with, and you mentioned this, is, is the process. We have a process for a reason, and that wasn't followed at all. And so I understand, you know, and you've taken responsibility for that, mistakes were made, but that puts us in a very difficult position. The one thing about these two signs, well, I'm gonna say two, the pole sign and then the ones on the pavilion, that is different for me and makes this a little less troubling is that the pole sign is in a park, it's not on a historic building, and the other two signs are on the pavilion, which is a new structure, and they face into the park. So I don't find either or any of these signs to be particularly objectionable, and I'm hoping that if we grant this exception, that it isn't gonna set a precedent of, you know, now it's a free-for-all and we're gonna just sort of forget historic preservation and people can just do whatever they want. But I, I'll end by making, I, I want to be very firm that we've had historic downtown property owners in the past who, their standard mode of operation has been to do what they want and ask for forgiveness after the fact. And we cannot keep allowing that. I don't think that happened in this case, and so that makes me feel less bad about it. But I hope you understand what a difficult position this puts us in, and that it is really important that we follow our process and follow the rules and get the correct certificates of appropriateness and permits going forward, and that those are there for a reason. They're not, it's not just arbitrary. So I, it's a tough decision, but I'm leaning towards granting this exception, but it's, it's difficult because I do believe in historic preservation and, and this is, it wasn't done the right way. Anyway, that's all I'll say.
Thank you. Brent?
I'm a, I'm a big fan of historic preservation. I also understand the economic realities of developing downtown. But, you know, having designs, design standards and aesthetically pleasing downtown, I think helps enhance economic development and increase property values. You know, I just can't say enough good things about the Lookout Point project. It was just absolutely phenomenal. Lookout, thank you very much. Stephanie, great project. But with that said, I'm not sure that internally illuminated pole signs are appropriate in our historic district.
Hayden, welcome to the council.
Thank you. So the city appoints and hires people to do their jobs. They rejected this, and I truly respect the Historic Preservation Commission. They're doing their job. And one of the things that we talked about, which I didn't have an official vote in, but it was uniform code enforcement for 2024. We need to enforce that. I, sorry, you admitted you guys didn't follow the rules with it, and if we're going to enforce code uniformly, how many exceptions can we make? Corey?
I think I already said mine.
Okay. Josh?
When, when I read the packet on this agenda item and saw that a sign was installed on public property without city approval, I stopped and had to reread the packet because I couldn't believe that that had happened. I understand the name proximities of Historic Preservation Commission and Historic Downtown Pocatello, but business isn't done on assumptions, it's done on contracts. And when a contract came back signed with the Historic Downtown Pocatello Incorporated and not the City of Pocatello, I feel like that should have raised a massive red flag. I think that that's either a disingenuous mistake that is tied to, like, we've seen patterns of ask forgiveness later, or it was a mistake of just, I think, the absolute grossest negligence of normal professional standards. But Lookout Point is the gem of our downtown now, and I cannot thank, as everyone in this council has enough, Lookout Credit Union and Historic Downtown Pocatello Incorporated for the years of work, I, the, the years of work that came and went into this project. And I, like Rick, have attended farmers' markets and concerts, and this has brought people together, and I don't believe that the partners with the City of Pocatello should be punished for what I believe is the blunder of YESCO.
Okay. All right, everybody said their piece. I'm gonna say something, too, because I can, and I'm not gonna vote until I say it, I guess. And so, first of all, I just, I've got to echo. I want, well, I 100% support the sign there right now. Let me just say that. I support it. This is not about economic development and, and hurting businesses and buildings and hurting people building and, and investing down there. This literally is 100% about a process that was not followed by the sign company. Had nothing to do with Lookout Credit Union, had nothing to do with downtown Pocatello, Historic Downtown Pocatello, had everything to do with YESCO. And I will tell you, I can't be more disappointed, I couldn't be more disappointed in a company that has done work in Pocatello. And they know, they know the process, and I, and I appreciate that David took responsibility for it. I, I appreciate that. At the end of the day, the project is a great project. And unfortunately, we have a local partner that has kind of been dragged through the mud in it because, and it wasn't their fault. And sometimes I feel like we make it harder to invest and support things, and I, and, and I, and I, we don't want to ever do that. And sometimes we do that, but it's not because of the city, it's because of the process. The companies already know what they're supposed to be doing, and they haven't followed that process. There's concerns on the HPC. When this was a public hearing there, we had two people that were told they had to recuse themselves from that. I don't know how that went. I don't know if that was right or wrong.
Was wrong.
I don't necessarily agree with that. I think there should have been, there, there should have been more discussion there, and I believe that if that was the case, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't be here today right now, quite frankly. The HPC Committee does a great job for the city. They take pride in what they do, and we have a lot of pride in our, in our, in our community and in our downtown area. Stephanie has done an incredible job down in our downtown area. Lookout Point is, like everybody said, is a gem, and everything has just improved. People are down there walking. The, the community is vibrant in our downtown area, which also makes me feel bad because downtown also is getting beat up here because a company that knew the process didn't follow it. And, and I have a hard time with the idea that we thought we were working with the city. And if there are other cities that are not charging for the permits, maybe they should reevaluate where, what they're doing there when it's a city thing. We feel like we should hold the city to the same standard as we hold all the businesses out there. In saying that, counsel, I will tell you, if it is a 3-3 split, I am 100% supportive of this. The Lookout Point is an incredible asset to our community. Lookout Credit Union has done an incredible job getting out and really, truly taken that leap where, quite frankly, a lot of people could have, and they didn't, and Lookout Credit Union did. And so with that, I'll just, I'll end with that, and we'll see how this goes. But with that being said, we have a motion by Councilmember Mangum. We have a second by Councilmember Cheatham. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Nichols?
No.
Paulson?
No.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for being here for that. That sign will stay. Motion passes. So thank you very much, and please don't do it again, YESCO. Please don't. With that, we'll move on to Agenda Item 9. Agenda Item 9 is Rural Grant 5311 and 5339 Formular Grant Application Public Transit. Counsel may wish to approve the following grant applications for rural 5311 and 5339 grants, and if awarded, authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents and authorize the public transit director to execute the grants and any necessary amendments subject to, to award confirmation. Legal department review and budget amendments. No city funds are used for the rural program. A 5311 two-year operating, or operating funding in the amount of $2,213,728. The federal share is $1,582,789.75, with a required local match of $630,938.25. And B, 5339, capital funding in the amount of $734,000 for the purchase of four buses. The federal share is $587,200, with a required local match of $146,800.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move to approve Agenda Item 9 as specified, Sections A and B.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mangum and a second by Mansfield. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 10, Resolution Local Highway Technical Assistance Council 2024 TAP Grant Application. Counsel may wish to adopt a resolution and approve a grant application for the Local Highway Technical Assistance Council 24, 2024 TAP Grant Application for the South Fifth Avenue Pedestrian Improvement Project, and if awarded, authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review. The total project cost is $535,290 and requires a 7.34% local match.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move to approve Agenda Item 10 as specified, and if awarded, authorize your signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mangum and a second by Paulson. Connie, would you please call the roll?
Mangum?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yeah.
Thank you. Agenda Item 11, Resolution Lease Agreement 735 North Main Street. Counsel may wish to adopt a resolution and approve a lease agreement with Bannock Youth Foundation for the property located at 735 North Main Street for the purpose of a youth group home and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review. Term is five years with a five-year renewal option at the rental rate of $1 per year.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
First, I'd like to say I'm in favor of anything we can do to support the youth of our community, and anything that will positively impact the youth of our community. So with that, I would move that we approve Agenda Item 11 as specified.
Second.
We have, we have a motion by Mangum and a second by Mansfield. I'm sorry, Cheatham, I, you got, yeah? Yes.
I'd like to ask you a question about this, this item. This lease expired last March, and here we are in January dealing with this at this point. I'm wondering who's going to monitor and manage this lease over the, in its future?
Well, Christine's coming up, so I'm not gonna bother her. I'll let her answer this instead of me.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Christine Howe, Grants Manager. So I started with the city in 2021, and as you noted, the last time this lease was renewed was in 2018. So we've since developed an internal process so that we can keep track of leases that fall within our department.
So does this fall under your, under Planning Department? Does it fall in the Legal Department? Where does this fall?
So my understanding is that the departments that are most closely associated with the original project are responsible for working with those agencies. So as these leases come due for renewal, we kind of keep track of that. So this was originally purchased with CDPG funds in 1997, and so since that time, it's fallen within the Neighborhood and Community Services Division.
Okay.
Can I make a follow-up?
Absolutely.
There are some provisions in this lease for monitoring the property, the condition and so forth and following up. Will that also be your department's responsibility?
I believe those provisions are to comply with city code. So if there is a code enforcement issue that would fall within that department, or if we received complaints, we would, you know, field those. As far as I understand, the, the Bannock Youth Foundation, who'd be the leaseholder, is responsible for utilities and maintaining that property per the lease.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. We have a motion by Mangum and a second by Mansfield. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 12, Resolution Lease Agreement Airport. Counsel may wish to adopt a resolution and approve a lease agreement with Don Marler for a hangar at the Pocatello Regional Airport, and corresponding resolution and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review. The hangar is approximately 1,760 square feet for the purpose of aircraft storage. Term is five years and a rental rate of $302.37 per month.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Is that me?
Go ahead. You're, I mean, you're on a roll.
Well, I, I would move that we approve Agenda Item 12 as specified.
Second.
It was a quiet second, but I'm going with it. We have a motion by Mangum and a second by Cheatham. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 13, Professional Services Agreement Airport. Counsel may wish to approve a professional services agreement between the city and TO engineers for design, bidding, and construction administration of parking lots, pavement maintenance, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review. The fee is not to exceed $183,584.58, and is eligible for 93.75% reimbursement from the FAA, and the remaining 6.25% funded using airport passenger facility charge funds. The project is contingent upon grant award.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President, uh, Lurick.
Chi Lurick.
I almost messed up.
I move that we approve the professional services agreement between the city and TO engineers as outlined in Agenda Item Number 13, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Cheatham. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 14, Professional Services Agreement Task Order Number Seven, High Country Tank Replacement. Counsel may wish to consider staff recommendations and approve Task Order Number Seven, High Country Tank Replacement, under the existing on-call engineering services agreement between the city and Keller Associates in the amount of $280,250, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve the Professional Service Agreement Task Order Number Seven for the High Country Tank Replacement, and authorize any of your signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review as outlined in Agenda Item Number 14.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Cheatham, and Mangum got you, and a second by Mangum. Connie, could you please?
Mr. Mayor, could I ask some questions before we vote on this?
Absolutely, yes.
I'm wondering if we could get Justin up here.
Justin?
I found the description of this a little bit difficult to follow. I presume the work will, will occur sometime in this fiscal year?
Yes, Justin Armstrong Water Superintendent. Yeah, so to address your, your question, yeah, we would begin immediately with design services and evaluation of selecting an alternative for replacement. There's a couple of different options for reconstruction of this tank, and so that's part of the process.
In the, in the specifications, there was a Type 1, Type 2, and Type 3, and I never was able to figure out exactly what that meant. to figure out exactly what that meant, whether it was referred to the placement of the tank above or below ground, or the construction of the tank.
Yeah, it's a construction method for concrete tanks.
So is that your preferred build then, is a concrete tank?
That is our preferred option with this versus a welded steel. The city owns both. We found that the long-term operation and maintenance costs are much lower with your concrete tanks, and so your service life in return is longer.
Couple of follow-ups, Mr. Mayor. Do you anticipate this tank will be above-ground, partially underground, or all underground?
Those are good questions. And yes, that's, all of those things we're considering within the design process.
So is that going to be left up to the engineering firm then to figure out what's best, or?
Well, not necessarily, because the city's going to have input, looking at the cost alternatives. You know, each one of these is going to have different cost components related to it. And so making sure that we're, you know, investing well within the construction and long-term maintenance. You know, there's certain, there's certain positive impacts for burying a tank underground, but cost and construction can be a little bit more expensive that way. So, plus, we're also limited on some of the land that we have available. Currently, we have a site up there that's on BLM, and there's room for expansion of the tank compound. But, yeah, we're also limited within those areas.
Mr. Mayor, if I may ask, Justin got his crystal ball. Any idea when this might be in service? How long this is going to take?
You know, we're probably about close to a year for design and bid, and then from there, probably another year to 18 months, based on what we've seen with construction.
Will the tanks be in parallel use, or when this tank is in service, will the old tank come down?
Yes, this tank will replace the old bolted steel tank. So the bolted steel tank is in poor shape at the moment. The coating is failing, especially up at the roof line, where there's all the structural components of rafters and column supports and things like that. And so we've tried to prolong that with some cathodic protection in the tank, but cathodic protection up at the airspace at the top of the ceiling is very difficult, and that's your most accelerated corrosion cell is at the roof line.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we vote? Thank you, Justin. Thanks. So we have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Mangum. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham.
Yes.
Mangum.
Yes.
Lurick.
Yes.
Mansfield.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Paulson.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 15, Bid Acceptance Purchase Agreement for Portable Generator Water Pollution Control. Council may wish to consider the recommendations of staff for the following request regarding a 2024 portable emergency backup generator for water pollution control, WPC. This equipment is used for emergency power at the city's 24 lift stations in power outage situations. A, accept the lowest responsive quote from generic portable generator from energy management in the amount of $58,968, and if accepted, authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents between the city of Pocatello and energy management in the amount of $58,968, subject to legal department review. Funding for the purchase is available in the FY 2024 WPC budget.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would move that we approve Agenda Item 15 as specified.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion.
I have a question.
Okay, we have a motion by Mangum and a second by Cheatham, and we have a question. So Levi, would you?
Levi Adams, WPC Superintendent.
Hey Levi, a question about warranty on the generator. What's the lifespan, expected lifespan, and any guarantees that come with it, and how do they compare to the other option?
The warranty's only about a year.
Okay.
The last generator we got 24 years out of, so we're going to be, you know, we maintain these very low because they're emergency equipment.
Okay.
So we do have two of them right now. This is just replacing the one, and the majority of like the major lift stations have standalone generators at them as well.
Great.
Corey?
So we're looking for the one here. Are there more needed?
No, right now, we're right-sized. Like I said, the larger lift stations around town have a standalone generator that's at the facility. This is for some of the smaller lift stations that only pump, you know, three, four times a day, so they're able to use the portables to service several different lift stations.
Follow-up. How often are you seeing power outages?
That all depends. Most, we don't get too many. You'll get, and most of them are usually short and isolated around certain areas of town, you know, maybe one a month, maybe, maybe one every two or three months. It all depends sometimes. Yeah, it's kind of a crapshoot, really.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I've got several questions, if I may. Will the lift stations need any special wiring to hook up to this new generator?
It's already done.
So it's all plug and play?
Yeah, you just plug it in and set the right frequency.
What's the, this is a 50-kilowatt generator we're talking about. What's a typical lift station load?
There's so many different. That will service all of the lift stations that we have. It's large enough to, but the typical load all depends on the size of lift stations. Most of them are well below that load. That's more of a just-in-case kind of issue, so we're not going to have any issues like overpowering those.
Is there an estimated delivery time on this, or is it like everything else we've been bidding?
It's actually getting better. I won't have to do a budget amendment for it, so we should get it before October.
Knock on wood.
Depending, last year, it was, I want to say it was like 12 months, 12 to 18 months, and we're down to four or five. So it's coming around.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Levi. So we have a motion by Mangum and a second by Cheatham. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Mangum.
Yes.
Cheatham.
Yes.
Lurick.
Yes.
Mansfield.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Paulson.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 16, Bid Acceptance Purchase of Decorative Light Poles and Heads, Street Department. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and award bid for decorative light poles and heads to the lowest responsive bidder, Platt Electric, in the amount of $99,379.39. The authorized, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents pertaining to the purchase, subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would move that we approve Agenda Item 16 as specified, authorizing your signature on all pertinent documents, subject to legal department review.
Second.
Thank you. We've got a motion by Mangum and a second by Cheatham. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Mangum.
Yes.
Cheatham.
Yes.
Lurick.
Yes.
Mansfield.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Paulson.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Before we move on, could we ask our street department a couple of questions about these polls?
Sure.
Wouldn't change my vote, but I've got a couple of.
Why change his vote?
No, 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 no. During our pre-agenda session, there was some discussion of the problems you're having with people smacking our polls. Could you review those numbers again for us about how many polls currently aren't working?
Yeah, so Tom Kirkman, Deputy Public Works Director, we have a love-hate relationship with decorative poles. They're beautiful, but they get hit a lot. So currently, we have probably between eight to 10 that are in pieces. So as you drive through downtown, there's cones sitting on the bases as we're waiting for new poles to be arriving. This is kind of a new process we're doing this year where we're going to put them in stock. We were able to pigeonhole some money for that so that we could put those up in a more timely fashion, instead of having the beautiful orange cone pretty enough downtown.
A follow-up.
Yes.
During the meeting we had in here with other municipal organizations recently, the talk was of dark sky. Do the fixtures that you're looking at, are they compliant with that idea?
They are dark sky-friendly. The makeup of it, it broadcasts to the side, so it's hard to be completely dark sky-friendly on a decorative. But they are friendly. They're not perfect.
Thank you.
Sounds good. And these are magnets?
Yeah, we joked that they're magnetic because they seem to just attract vehicles.
Might see if.
We're going to demagnetize them this time.
That sounds good. I see if our people that are teaching driver's ed can teach people to stay on the road, not the sidewalk.
We would love that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I've never had to ask my insurance the question, fortunately, so I'll ask you instead. Does liability insurance cover this sort of thing?
That one's tough. It depends on the case. A lot of times, what happens is they're not insured, so it ends up going to ICRAP. And then our insurance ICRAP, they won't pay the claim until the pole's stood. And so when there are 10- to 12-week lead times, and you're waiting for 12 weeks to get a pole, we end up holding the bag on that light for a considerable amount of time.
Corey?
Is there a plan to do like an overhaul of the majority of the lights in the city with these decorative lights, or?
Not currently. We have our concerns about that, because when the last numbers that we could find easily was 20 years ago, they were $1,500 apiece. Now they're $5,000 apiece. And so it's one of those, the beauty versus the maintenance costs, right? Those are decisions that would need to be made. We're definitely not opposed to it, but I think we'll have to talk about that pretty good. Does that make sense to answer?
Is it? Oh, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Tom. And we did vote on that, and we're not going to ask anybody if they want to change their vote. Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item 17, Vehicle Lease Agreements, Police Department. Council may wish to approve the leases of six fully-equipped GMC trucks from Bancorp for the Pocatello Police Department. Procurement for these vehicles was budgeted in the FY 22 and FY 23 Police Department budgets. Due to supply chain issues, the vehicles were not received. Council may also wish to authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents for the procurement of the vehicles, subject to legal department review. Funding has been allocated in the police department's FY 24 budget.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Go ahead, Council President Lurick.
I move that we approve the leases of six fully-equipped GMC trucks from Bancorp for the police department, as outlined in Agenda Item Number Seven. Authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents, and subject to legal department review.
When you said seven, did you mean 17?
17, yes.
Thank you. I thought you meant 17, but.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Mangum. Wendy, or Wendy? Been a long time. Connie, Connie, could you please call the roll?
Lurick.
Yes.
Mangum.
Yes.
Cheatham.
Yes.
Mansfield.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Paulson.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on, can we talk about this one a minute?
Sure.
I guess I want our fleet department to comment if I could.
Tom? Fleet Department, not the chief. And the chief.
Yeah. These are GMCs, and we're traditionally been using Fords. Is that going to cause a service issue, training for maintenance, any kind of procurement problems or service problems in the fleet department?
Once again, Tom Kirkman, Deputy Public Works Director, this is not the standard. You know, Ford's kind of the go-to for police cars, but there is parts available to make a Chevy as good as a Ford when it comes to the maintenance.
I will go ahead and let you rephrase that.
So the Fords have really got this handled good. I was trying to make a joke, sorry. For like bigger brakes, they have different things, right, that come on these. Well, we can source those parts to get them to what the Fords come with. So to answer your question, it'll take a little creativity on a few little things, but for the most part, we got it handled.
So these, it's my understanding, and these are not pursuit-rated police vehicles? These are just off-the-shelf GMCs?
That is correct. Pursuit-rated vehicles are near impossible to maintain right now. And so.
To maintain? To maintain or get.
To buy, sorry.
Okay.
I apologize. Yeah, they're just not available right now. There are a few options, but they're not options that we feel is a good solution to fill that. There's a different manufacturer that's also Dodges in it, and they have way too many problems to overcome the issues. Sorry.
Okay, now.
Don't ask if you don't want to know. I'm sorry.
Any other questions?
If I could follow up.
Yes.
What's it going to take to equip these vehicles where they need to be equipped to make them a police department vehicle?
So this is part of this contract. They will come fully equipped. From VLS is the company that's going to outfit those, so they'll come turnkey-ready to the road.
Okay, so we won't have to do any upfitting locally. Any additional upfitting?
Yeah, like for instance, they don't make a push bumper, a pit bumper for a Chevy, so we can fabricate those in-house. And so little things like that.
But as far as suspension, transmission, cooling systems, those kind of things you traditionally think of in pursuit vehicles?
Yeah, it's definitely the pursuit rated is the way to go. They have optimized the cooling packages. These vehicles unfortunately idle a lot. The suspension is more rigid for high speeds. That's stuff that we can overcome, some of those. Not all of them.
What do you expect to spend per vehicle to do what you're going to do once we receive them?
It'll be minimal. So we did.
1,000?
Well, we're going to have to see what all they, we don't know yet for, there's going to be things that come up, right, when they're upfitting it. And so it's kind of hard for that. To give you an idea for the F-150s, so we had a F-150 involved in an accident, and it bent the pit bumper. So it was going to spend about a week, week and a half to body shop, but the pit bumper was eight weeks out. And so we were like, we can't sit on this for eight weeks. So with our fab shop, we have equipment. We were able to design them, draw them, cut them out, and weld, and get that vehicle back into service. And it's pretty minimal costs. So the pit bumpers were probably 500 bucks. But I'm sure that it's going to, there's going to be a few little things that they're going to want to tweak as well. So, but we don't see that being a huge cost.
Could I switch to the chief, please?
Sure.
Chief, are you satisfied that these GMCs will serve your department as well as the Fords that you're used to?
Yes, and here's why. Chief Roger Shai, Pocatello Police Department. We've worked with fleet. I've talked to several other agencies across the state and with Utah. And the nonavailability of pursuit-rated vehicles, this is the best option. Our plan is to give these vehicles to our street crimes and our supervisors, who don't put as much wear and tear on a vehicle, and give the patrol officers the pursuit-rated vehicles that are out there. I just got an email from Ford last week that says that they don't have any anticipated dates for the pursuit rated, but they're hoping sometime in 2024. We ordered five vehicles, pursuit-rated vehicles, back in September of '22, and those got canceled. We never saw those. And we've been meeting with fleet. We've had several meetings with Tom and his crew, as well as my team, to figure out what's the best option here. We did look at Dodges, but there, we know that there are several problems with those. We talked to several other agencies that said there was problems with the V8 motor that they had in them, and then the V6 was a little bit better, but not up to snuff. And so we talked to them, and we looked at shop time, and we looked at, we looked at a lot of different options. So with this, yes, I'm satisfied with what fleet can do and how they'll come from VLS.
Now, when your supervisors and street crimes department are finished with these vehicles down the road, however long that may be, you'll probably pass these down to other people in your department, am I correct?
Either other people in the department, or we'll see if there's anybody else in the city that would want these vehicles. Some of our vehicles we have right now, they're 2014s, that these vehicles are going to, it's going to trickle down, so those will replace the ones out of patrol and will get rid of those 2014s that have been out in the street for a while and have over 100,000 miles on them.
Is there a concern that as they're passed down, they may end up in a service that we're not designed for because they're not pursuit-rated vehicles?
No, because we've got like our school resource officer, our SROs, that we give those vehicles to, as well as, they'll probably stay for a long time with the supervisors. I don't foresee them going outside of that. But if they do, we'll look at the school resource officer option where, you know, they're not used as the same capacity as a patrol unit.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Josh?
Turnaround time, delivery? Are you going to get them in '24?
Yes, yeah. In fact, they've been hanging on to these vehicles for us. Yes, yeah, they're, in fact, they've been hanging on to these vehicles for us in anticipation for this meeting. So they're going to be moving pretty fast once we give them the AOK to move ahead.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did we vote on that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we'll move to agenda item 18 then. Lookout Point Memorandum of Understanding Parks and Recreation. Council may wish to approve a memorandum of understanding, MOU, with historic Old Town Pocatello Foundation Incorporated, for the Parks and Recreation Department to provide maintenance responsibilities for Lookout Point.
Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve agenda item number 18 as listed.
Second.
We have a motion by Nichols and a second by Lyric? No comments?
You wait until after the vote.
We're waiting until after the vote, okay. Connie, would you please call the roll?
Nichols?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Paulson?
Thank you. We'll move to agenda item 18 with no comments. Or 19 with no comments on 18. Rebranding contract Hub Collective LTD. Council may wish to approve a contract with Hub Collective LTD and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents to undertake a rebranding campaign for the city of Pocatello, subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the rebranding contract with Hub Collective Limited and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review, as outlined in agenda item number 19.
Thank you. We've got a motion by Lyric and a second by Mangum.
And can I make a comment?
We've got a couple of comments, so yeah. Just start on that end this time.
Thanks. I just wanted to highlight how exciting it was that we received 67 proposals for this project and the wealth of opportunity that we had to select from this. And I'm really excited about the opportunity to do this rebranding and to work with Hub Collective and just the, and thank the wealth of proposals that came in and for everybody who did submit a proposal for that project.
Linda?
I would reiterate that. I second what you just said. And then also, I just want to emphasize, I'm thrilled to see this finally happening. I want to emphasize how important this is for our community, particularly, I mean, we talked earlier about development. This is key to economic development in our community. And I'm just glad that we are getting this done. I want to thank staff that worked really hard on putting the RFP out there and getting those proposals. And I'm excited to see the response that we got, but also really to be moving forward.
Thank you. Rick?
I just want to comment about this process. Branding, branding is so much more than a logo. It's so, I did this once, a couple of times in fact. The last time was at ISU Credit Union, that's now Lookout, back when we changed our brand probably 10 or 12 years ago, or a little longer than that. And it is a gigantic process. And I have to urge department heads to get on board with this when it happens. Because Marleese is not going to be able to do this by herself. She can create what the brand is going to be. She can create what we're going to do. But the implementation is gigantic. We spent probably half an hour, 45 minutes this afternoon talking about this project. And I spent $100,000 the first day of that branding program with the credit union, just trying to implement it. And it wasn't over. That was just the first $100,000. And that was for a little, what were we, $150 million credit union then probably dug? And only had 50 or 60 employees. And we're looking at a project here that is easily 10 times that size. By the time we implement colors and logos and a brand guideline and implement all of that, it's going to mean you can't put the logo on every plaid shirt you own. It's going to mean there's going to be standards on how you sign your emails and how you write things and what you can do. And this is a project that is going to project the image and who this, and identity of this town when we market it. Mia Kate Kennedy with Manic Development has been talking about the need for a brand for our community when she goes out and tries to sell our community. And it is an absolutely gigantic project. We all need to speak with one voice when it comes to this new brand that's going to come out of this in the next year. And I, it's important. It can reinvigorate our community. And I have every faith that Marleese is going to do her best, but she needs everybody's help to make this work. Thank you.
Thank you. So thank you. We have a motion by Lyric and a second by Mangum. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Lyric?
An enthusiastic yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 20, items from the audience. This time has been set aside to hear items from the audience not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda items. Item will either be, items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized. As a reminder, there's a total of 15 minutes for this and three minutes per speaker. We have one, Eric Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name's Eric Stewart. I'm at 128 North Hayes, apartment number two. I have a letter that, from the precinct six, that I would like to distribute to the city council. I have hard copies. May I do so now?
Please hand them to me and I'll distribute them so you can keep talking. Thank you. Go ahead and continue.
Do I need to sign this?
No.
I live in precinct six. Pocatello High School's in my neighborhood, some commonly called Old Town Pocatello, so that's my neighborhood. I've conducted a survey recently of the 1,252 homes in precinct six. 174 people responded to the survey. 120 said that they were not directly impacted by the mayor or the city council. 27 said they were satisfied with the mayor and city council. 27 people said they were not satisfied with the mayor and the city council. I had a conversation with those people. I asked them, why are you satisfied? I developed a list of compliments for the mayor and the city council on the good things that you're doing. I like to emphasize, I compliment the mayor and the city council on the things that they're doing. I asked the people why they're not satisfied. I developed a list of concerns and proposed solutions, which you'll see in the letter before you. It resulted in a letter and that's what you have in your hands at this point. I have met with Mayor Blad and received a response from Mayor Blad on December 6th. Originally, the letter was written in October. I had anticipated getting responses by December, but I was, I came to the work session in December and it was canceled. I came to the city council meeting on December 21st. It was canceled, so I'm here tonight, so.
Thanks for hanging in there.
I'm willing to accept responses to this letter for the next 30 days, February 4th. The responses, I'm not trying to make work for the city council. I'm open to receiving verbal responses. If you want to sit down, I will take notes and just verbally give me this responses. Happy to receive that. If you want to take this document and just handwrite your responses, I'm happy to receive that as well. Or if you want to make a formal response, that's fine. After February 4th, I'll be gathering those responses and distributing them to the people who are satisfied and not, so they know what you responded. After that, a sec.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Eric, you gave me one for Craig Yaden, precinct community chairman, so I'm assuming you want to get that to him. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yep, thank you. Okay, with that, we have no one else that's signed up, so thank you for being here tonight. We will go to agenda item 21, is the State of the City. This time has been set aside for the annual State of the City report. Hello, I'm City of Pocatello Mayor Brian Blad, and I'm pleased to present the State of the City Report. 2023 has been a great year for the city of Pocatello. And in this address, you will hear about some of the exciting projects happening across different departments. The mayor and council department is proud to announce the City of Pocatello flag was ranked number 11 out of over 300 known flags in the new survey by the North American Vexillological Association. The mayor's youth advisory council saw a need when fentanyl overdoses went on the rise. So they put together a presentation. This presentation, created by area high school students, was presented by the Pocatello Police Department at many meetings recognized by the Association of Idaho Cities and shared with Governor Littles' Operation Estopropetua, tracking fentanyl and methamphetamines. Chief Shai was so impressed, he personally gave the MIAC members an award for their work. This year, we had three mayoral scholarship recipients. Congratulations to the three winners and best of luck following your dreams. 2023 saw three new elected officials, council member Corey Mangum, Brent Nichols, and Hayden Paulson. We are excited to start 2024 with all six of our council members. And the rebranding of the city of Pocatello. After having a logo that has served the city well for over 30 years has started, we look forward to working with the company chosen to help the city during this process.
Hello, my name is Roger Shai, Chief of the Pocatello Police Department. This year, four members of the Pocatello Police Department were awarded the Governor's Medal of Honor. These are the first members of the city of Pocatello to receive this award. All four officers went above and beyond the call of duty to save lives and keep our community safe. Two of those four officers were issued national awards, and now here's a word from our governor.
Today, we recognize two members of the Pocatello Police Department for their extraordinary acts of valor in the line of duty. Officer Amos and Officer Handel. I'm honored to congratulate you on receiving national recognition from the U.S. Attorney General for your bravery. Your actions demonstrate true heroism and selfless service. Every day, brave men and women like these two officers are asked to respond to our most difficult moments. They know the risks. And still, without hesitation, they answer the call to serve and put the safety of Idahoans over their own.
Our dispatch center was not completely upgraded. We have been working with the 911 committee to upgrade our outdated equipment. Some of the equipment was from the mid-1990s. Working with the 911 committee, we were able to get state-of-the-art equipment installed for Motorola. This was done with 911 funds in conjunction with an IPSCC grant. The equipment will help better serve the citizens of Pocatello and the efficiency of the dispatch center. Recently, the Idaho Crime Report was released. The report indicated that crime in the city of Pocatello was reduced by 14.42%. We would like to thank all of the members of the Pocatello Police Department that worked on this and to help keep our community safe.
Hello, my name is Levi Adams, Water Pollution Control Superintendent for the City of Pocatello. Water pollution control was very productive in 2023, working on a variety of projects to improve operations and infrastructure in support of our mission to protect the public health and the water quality of the Portner River and the aquifer underneath our city. The treatment facility cleaned over 1.2 billion gallons of water, exceeding regulatory standards by removing over 99.5% of all contaminants. The collection crew cleaned over 250 miles of sewer line. The major focus of the department was the beginning of construction of a dewatering facility, new mixing system and digester number three, and a new administration/operations building.
Hello, my name is Justin Armstrong, and I am the Water Superintendent at the City Water Department. The Water Department produced and treated 4.4 billion gallons of water to consumers. Capital projects included the replacement of 1.3 miles of water mains throughout city neighborhoods, which included North Hayes Street, North Buchanan Avenue, and East Chapel Street areas. Additional projects included the drilling of two wells, replacement of our 5 million gallon tank transmission line, and construction of the Pocatello Creek Booster Station and Transmission Line.
Hello, my name is Skylar Beebe. I am the Director at Pocatello Regional Transit. In fiscal year 2023, Pocatello Regional Transit increased its ridership from 2022 and performed nearly 190,000 passenger trips. In June, the department received four brand-new ADA cutaway buses. These buses have 16 passenger seats, three wheelchair stations, and are capable of transporting passengers regardless of their mobility. This project was funded 80% with 5339 grants from the Federal Transit Administration. In 2024, PRT is looking to receive up to eight more cutaway-style buses that will be ADA compliant. These buses will be placed into urban and rural programs and will replace buses that have over 300,000 miles. This project will be funded 80% by 5339 grants from the Federal Transit Administration.
Hello, my name is Chris Abbott, Director of Pocatello Animal Services. The animal shelter had a year of maintenance and housekeeping for things of the shelter needed to get caught up on. Privacy fencing, shelter capacity standards, and donated van, to name a few. Our main highlight would be our stats. While being able to maintain a no-kill status from Best Friends Animal Sanctuary, we still were able to get more adoptions done than in the past years. In 2021, adoptions, return to owner, transfers were 1,478. Shelter euthanasia were 192, owner intended euthanases were 76. In 2022, adoptions, return to owner, and transfers were 1,633, while shelter euthanases were 95, owner intended euthanases were 97. We will continue to work to keep our no-kill designation by working with other shelter agencies to transfer and home animals.
Hello, my name is Eric Cease, Director of the Marshall Public Library at the City of Pocatello. New Exploration Center. We received a large donation from the Yost and Ashcroft families that was used to create a new STEAM, that's Science, Technology, Engineering, Art, and Math Exploration Center here in the library. This is going to allow us to present a wider range of programming for the youth of Pocatello. New programs. This year, we started two new programs for children. The first is a multicultural storytime where every month a new culture is explored. And the other is a STEAM night with different theme and activity every month. These programs have been well-attended and we look forward to continuing them. Collection shift. We completed a very large shift of our nonfiction collection, and this allowed us to create a welcoming standalone section for the children's nonfiction. Seed giveaway. For the first time, we hosted a seed giveaway in March. We received many donated seed packets and were able to give away nearly 200 packets of seeds to local gardeners. This is another program we hope to make a yearly event.
Hello, my name is Alan Evans, Manager of the Pocatello Regional Airport, which is owned and operated by the City of Pocatello. Pocatello Regional Airport has had a busy year. We welcomed an additional flight to Salt Lake City on Delta Airlines and an upgrade in aircraft to the 75-seat EMV 175, which features first-class and comfort-plus seating. The addition adds an early afternoon arrival and departure to the existing morning departure and late-night arrival. This is a welcome addition to the community who has requested additional service so they can more easily take advantage of all of the perks of flying from Pocatello. This year's FAA Airport Improvement Grant projects include remarking of the main runway and update of the airport's master plan. The master plan provides a review of current airfield facilities, forecasts of future projects, and alternatives for meeting those needs. The plan also provides alternatives to address some needed airfield layout changes to better comply with FAA design standards. Several new hangars are under construction to help address the growing demand for private aircraft storage. The master plan is also addressing the need by providing alternate locations for additional hangar space as currently available space is almost fully utilized. Airport staff had a very busy year completing repairs and improvements to existing warehouses and large hangars owned by the airport. Improvements included painting, rebuilding window frames and walls, new overhead doors, and repairing siding. The improvements will extend the useful life of these assets, allowing them to continue to generate revenue for the airport.
Hello, I'm Chief Ryan O'Hern with the Pocatello Fire Department. October was Fire Prevention Month. Crews and fire prevention personnel visited all third-grade students in the city of Pocatello and talked to them about fire safety. During the summer months, we were able to bring cool rain. During the summer months, we were able to bring cool rain to Caldwell, Alameda, and Raymond Parks. PFD also partnered with ISU and held a junior firefighter camp for youth interested in seeing what a career in firefighting is like. As part of our community risk reduction efforts, we installed smoke alarms and carbon monoxide detectors for individuals in need. The city was awarded a $240,000 grant by the Idaho Department of Lands for fuels reduction in the Johnning Creek area. The goal is to reduce the fuel load in and around residents' homes and create defensible space. In 2023, the PFD and Bannock County Amuse District had another busy year. Calls were up by 1%, and we ended the year with 9,185 calls, our busiest year on record. We've seen a steady increase in calls since 2019. PFD firefighters were deployed on several wildfires over the summer of 2023. In Idaho, crews worked on the Hayden Fire and the Payette Fire. Crews also deployed to Susanville, California. These deployments serve as valuable experience and training for our personnel. In 2023, eight PFD employees attended the National Fire Academy. Personnel also attended swiftwater, hazmat technician, and fire training. This year, we also enrolled eight new paramedic students into a program offered locally through the Madison Fire Department. As a department, our number-one asset is our people, and we want to thank them for their dedication and service to the community.
Hello, my name is Anne Butler. I'm the Director of the Parks and Recreation Department at the City of Pocatello. The Parks and Recreation Department has dozens of dedicated employees who work very hard each and every day to keep Pocatello moving in the right direction. Here are a couple of projects our department worked on in 2023. First, the Community Recreation Center Partnership. In a partnership agreement with the Portnife Health Trust, major changes began at the Community Recreation Center. The remodel will include enclosing approximately 3,200 square feet of indoor facility space to become a new fitness center. Additional improvements and updates will include a redesigned front entrance, new flooring, new ceiling tiles, lots of new paint, and some exterior facade, lighting, and landscape enhancements. This project is estimated to incur a cost of approximately $1.25 million. Thanks to the Portnife Health Trust for their generosity in this monumental project. After completion of this work, we would love to invite the public to come check out what the Community Recreation Center has to offer. Skate Park Refresh. Working together with the Southeastern Idaho Skate Park Association and Gilgan's Asphalt, significant updates have been made to the skate park in Lower Ross Park. Gilgan's Asphalt donated their time and materials to resurface the skate park. We appreciate their gracious donation and what a huge difference it's made for riders of all ages. Materials were purchased in partnership with Southeastern Idaho Skate Park Association, Lookout Credit Union, Mayor Blad's walking grant, and the Parks Department to buy enough gator skins to replace almost all the ramp surfaces. Zoo Idaho welcomed many new critters and has completed many projects. Zoo Idaho welcomed three new coyote pups who have been acclimating to their new home. They went on exhibit late this summer. The zoo also welcomed five trumpeter swans, and they are expecting another 13 swans very soon. Leadership Pocatello completed an amazing landscape project on zoo grounds, including new flower beds and benches. Volunteers from Farm Bureau also helped repaint the barn this year. Pathways behind the gift shop have been completed with the assistance of Lidl paving. These were much-needed improvements, and Zoo Idaho is thriving. Projects in fiscal year 2024. In the next fiscal year, we anticipate the completion of seven new pickleball courts in Lower Ross Park, a new slide at Ross Park Aquatics Complex, the Idaho Central Credit Union Splash Pad at OK Ward Park, resurfacing a Brooklyn's Playground at OK Ward Park, Cemetery Road repaving thanks to the hard work of our street department, and Hallowell Park will also continue to see improvements working in conjunction with School District 25, Grays Baseball, and the Pocatello American Legion. This coming season, you'll see improvements to the dugouts, widening of the stairs in the grandstands, the addition of new hand railing, improvements to the score booth, and a set of new bleachers in left field.
Hello, my name is Tom Kirkman, Deputy Public Works Director for the City of Pocatello. The Street Operations Department in fiscal year 2023 improved over 41 miles of roadway in its annual pavement management program, utilizing targeted treatments such as fog sealing, microsealing, and paving. In addition, pavement markings throughout the city were maintained or installed to provide traffic safety and mobility. The department continues to move forward in the technology world and has been utilizing a new AI technology that will enhance efforts by analyzing current pavement conditions on the city's roadways. Data is collected in real-time and can be analyzed throughout the year, allowing informed decisions for pavement maintenance and rehabilitation. Additionally, the department is also using AI technology for real-time pavement weather data. This allows us to know precise conditions in an area, which in turn helps us to develop winter maintenance plans during storm events. In fiscal year 2023, the sanitation department saw 7% increase in services. They collected over 2,900 tons of recycling material through its curbside pickup, composting, and glass recycling programs. These efforts have diverted over 15% of refuse that would have otherwise made it to the local landfill. This equates to almost 6 million pounds of material diverted from the landfill to a nearby recycling center. In addition, the city is proud to have a 74% participation rate in its curbside recycling program, which far exceeds the EPA's participation goal of 50% by 2030. Fleet Services is an internal service department with a mission to evaluate methods to develop a more coordinated and consistent approach to managing the city's fleet assets, along with improving service levels and decreasing fleet-related costs. In fiscal year 2023, Fleet Services implemented a new driver's training program. This is an all-inclusive program, taking operators of all skill levels and making them better. Our CDL program has increased the city's potential employee pool substantially as we can help operators obtain their license in-house. Part of that training includes simulated driving time, giving the city the freedom to train the inexperienced operators without risking injury to property or personnel. The city has also been working towards finalizing our new fuel station at the Public Works Annex Building on Garrett Way, which is estimated to be completed in the next coming months. The fuel station will replace the over-30-year-old current station with four below-ground tanks for added redundancy.
Hello, my name is Jeff Mansfield. I'm the Public Works Director and City Engineer. For the Portnife River Cleanup, with the help of dozens of community members, the Portnife River got a little cleaner this year. Thank you to everyone who lent a hand to get some plastic or other debris out of our waterways. We love to float the river. For grant writing, the Environmental Division wrote three grants to fund the Centennial Park Project. We're still waiting to hear if we got those grants. And one grant for river access parking lots and pathways north of I-86 at Baptiste Bridge and Douglas Lane. These river access points will be installed in FY24. For the Portland Valley Environmental Fair, the 2023 Portland Valley Environmental Fair was another great success. Thousands of residents turned out to celebrate our city and learn about what they can do to make it an even better place to live now and into the future. For the Engineering Department, we had the Carson Street Bridge Project. The Carson Street Bridge was constructed in 1950. After years of service, the bridge was in need of replacement. In 2019, the city worked in conjunction with the Local Highway Technical Assistance Council and was awarded funding for the Bridge Bundle Grant. The cost to construct the bridge was $1.4 million, and the city was required to pay $140,000 in match money. Construction began in December 2022 with an anticipated completion date of May 2023. At this point, the Carson Street Bridge is substantially complete and open to the public. Water lines, irrigation, striping, safety, and signage have all been improved, as well as landscaping around the bridge. For the South Fifth and Jason Street Safety Project. In response to changing conditions, the City of Pocatello obtained a $205,000 Traffic Safety Grant to improve the intersection of South Fifth Avenue and Jason Street, with the city paying $15,000 in match money. This project included extending the existing medians, reconstruction portions of the sidewalk, establishing a crosswalk, installing a rectangular rapid-flashing beacon system, and improving street lighting. Construction began in July of 2023, and in September 2023 was near completion with the repairing of the asphalt and striping. For the Hawthorne Road and West Quinn Road Intersection Project. The Bannock Transportation Planning Organization Policy Board determined that traffic at this intersection had exceeded its design capacity, and improvements were necessary. Estimated cost for this project was $4.09 million. The City of Pocatello has paid a 7.34% match, and the City of Chubak is reimbursing the City of Pocatello 25% of that match. The project includes new turn lanes, bike lanes, pedestrian crosswalks, and traffic signals, all intended to improve safety and congestion at the intersection. Utility work for this project has included gas lines, irrigation lines, power lines, fiber lines, as well as stormwater facilities and retaining walls. The final part of the project is the installation of traffic signals. However, due to supply chain issues outside the city's control, the signal poles did not arrive before the end of the 2023 construction season. When the last of the work resumes in the spring of 2024, only partial closures will be required, allowing the public continued access to the intersection.
Hello, my name is Gene Hill, Chief Financial Officer for the City of Pocatello. After several years of being inactive, the Audit and Investment Committee is now a functioning five-member board, including two city council members, one professional money manager, and two city staff members. The Committee meets cordly and has completed an RFP for the city external auditor and a new investment policy for the police retirement fund. The Payables Department has implemented a new P-card process, eliminating paper receipts and moving to a digital system. Over time, this will save hours of processing, managing paper waste, and increase the ability to obtain better data for transparency and insight with the city's purchases. The finance team, with the assistance of IT staff, department heads, and the city council, completed the fiscal year '24 budget. This process began in February and ends in August, all while continuing the day-to-day city operations.
Hello, my name is Brent McLean, Director of Planning and Development Services for the city. In 2023, the Planning Division finished the city's new "Our Valley, Our Vision" comprehensive plan. This plan reflects the values and vision of the community generated through extensive public engagement. Additionally, the department worked with the community and developers to improve and increase the commercial and residential footprint within the city. The Historic Preservation Commission received a grant to update the city's downtown development guidelines and received a $15,000 grant to update the citywide historic preservation plan as part of the Certified Local Government Program. The Planning and Development Services Department worked with several departments to apply for grants that helped move forward the goals of the comprehensive plan and other city goals. PDS worked in conjunction with other city departments to apply for eight grants, totaling about $37.5 million in fiscal year 2023. To date, the city has received the following. Safe Streets and Roads for All. This grant award was $225,900 and will create a U.S. Department of Transportation Safe System Plan to improve bicycle, pedestrian, and vehicle infrastructure with the goal of identifying top priorities for walkability bicycle improvements. The Safe Systems Plan strives to achieve zero pedestrian vehicle fatalities. North Portnife Crossing. Through this $7.75 million U.S. Department of Transportation raised grant, the city will make necessary upgrades at the Kraft Road and North Main Street intersection, including signalization, roadway reconfiguration, a new PRT bus stop, bicycle pedestrian improvements, and greenway trail updates and extension. USDA Urban Community Forestry Grant. This $1 million grant will fund an update to the city's tree inventory and asset management database, as well as tree mitigation, which includes trimming, removal, and replanting of the city's parks, rights of way, and other areas. The city's home rehabilitation grant and loan program continue to provide grants up to $5,000 and 0% interest loans for low-to-moderate income residents for necessary home repairs. As of September 2023, three loans and 18 grants were awarded. In addition, Neighbor Works Pocatello received $37,500 for mobile home repair grants. Gateway Habitat for Humanity also received CDBG funding to offer a small home repair program and purchase land plots for low-income housing development. Fiscal year '23 marked the fourth of five payments installations for the Aid for Friends Homeless Shelter, which was opened in 2021. In addition to this facilities project, the CDBG program provides direct public service grants to local agencies and nonprofits, including Boys and Girls Club, $4,500 for Youth Social Services Program, New Day Products, $3,000 for transportation services for persons with disabilities, Pocatello Free Clinic, $21,500 for dental services for low-income clients, Senior Activity Center, $5,000 for senior nutrition program, St. Vincent de Paul, $11,000 for emergency financial assistance for LMI individuals. CDBG funds also support the Sidewalk Public Infrastructure Program, which provides grants to low-income homeowners for sidewalk repairs. Four individual projects were completed or underway as of September 2023. The CDBG program also partnered with PRT to develop a neighborhood sidewalk program, which will provide over $300,000 for sidewalk repair in the Bonneville neighborhood. Throughout fiscal year '23, the Lead Safe Healthy Homes Program remediated lead hazards in six units, providing over $175,000 in lead hazard grants, or an average grant of $29,300.
Hello, my name is Richard Bigelow. I am the Building Official with the City of Pocatello. In 2023, permits issued through the Building Department totaled 3,388. Of that number, 307 were residential building permits and 31 were new commercial building permits. In FY 2023, the total number of inspections completed by the Building Department was 4,839. Additionally, the Building Department, along with other departments, have been working on implementing a new permitting and licensing software this year that will go live in 2024. This new software will provide contractors and homeowners with an online self-service portal to increase efficiency with permitting, licensing, and inspections.
Okay, that's it? I guess. So just a couple other things looking forward into this next year. I, first of all, have to thank the city's staff, employees. We could not have such a great city without the employees, and I want to personally thank them for all the work that they've done. Obviously, we just watched, what is that, 25 minutes? 26 minutes? And it's just a brief amount of things that the departments have been able to accomplish all year long. It's absolutely amazing to be able to work with the people that we get to work with here at the City of Pocatello, and so I want to thank them for all the work that they do. I know that doesn't, they don't get thanked all the time. Oftentimes, they get criticized, and I want them to know how much I appreciate them. I can tell you I'm excited about working with the city council. I'm very excited to have Hayden on our council, and it's going to be a great time to be able to help the City of Pocatello grow even more and become even a bigger asset for the state of Idaho. The City of Pocatello, I can tell you, is in a very, very good place right now. In fact, I would say, go so far as to say, the City of Pocatello is in a better shape now than it has ever been. Working with the city council and the budgeting that they've done, the restraints that they've had to make sure that the taxpayers are taken care of, and the things that we've been able to accomplish, it's absolutely a miracle in my mind if you put it down, put it together, as you look at everything we have to do to make it happen. And so, a big thank you to the city council for all the hard work that you do. Their service also goes very, I don't know, they don't get thanked enough as well for the things that they do, and so I appreciate them, and I appreciate the employees. I appreciate the citizens. We have a great community, and we're in a very good shape. 2024 is going to be a very, very good year. And if we can keep this State of the City in 2024 to 26 minutes, I'll be pretty impressed because I know we've got a lot of things that are going to happen, and I can't wait to see everything unfold. So thank you very much for being here tonight. Thank you for being a part of it and being interested in your community. And with that, we are adjourned.